Okay, you have to get so we got the reason of this. The evidence.
I will say.
Like make a motion to increase the budget.
At order, at order.
You're the one that suffers the most.
Yeah, not kidding, not kidding.
Good evening, everyone. I call it the order. The Little Falls Planning Board meeting of June 6, 2024. Please stand for the excellent Mr. Barry.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a minute. I'm sorry, just to have a moment of silence for our veterans of World War II. Today was D-Day. Thank you.
Valerie, please read the opening statement.
Little Falls Township Planning Board Meeting of Thursday, June 6, 2024 is called to order. Please take notice that adequate notice of this meeting was provided in accordance with NJSA 10:4-8 and NJSA 10:4-10 as follows. Notice of the meeting was promptly posted on the bulletin board at the municipal building located at 225 Main Street, Little Falls, New Jersey, on January 4, 2024. Copy of the notice was sent via email to the North Jersey Herald and News on same date. Additionally, a copy of the notice was filed in the Office of Township Clerk. Please note that this meeting is being taped. Therefore, we ask that you speak loud and clear into the microphones.
Thank you. Please pull the roll.
Mr. Barry?
Here.
Mr. Karaj?
Here.
Mr. Luke Damiano?
Here.
Ms. Cataldo?
Here.
Mr. Seaver?
Here.
Mr. Postus?
Here.
Mayor Damiano?
Here.
Councilman Scobah?
Here.
Dr. Abdi?
Here.
Mr. Wade? Mr. Dolan?
Here.
Mr. Remma? Mr. Brighley Dorrell?
Here.
Mr. Koblers?
Here.
Ms. Siobhan?
She's excuse.
And Mr. Kilpatrick?
Here. Thank you. Council President Scobah, do you have any comments for the planning board?
Chairman, no one came before the governing body at our last meeting concerning any issues with the planning board, but I do want to say we are in the last phase of the master plan looking at the parking study. So hopefully that will be finished and coming before shortly.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval of the minutes of May 2, 2024?
I'll make a motion second.
Valerie?
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Karaj?
Yes.
Mr. Luke Damiano?
Yes.
Ms. Cataldo?
Yes.
Mr. Postus?
Yes.
Dr. Abdi?
Yes.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Kilpatrick?
Yes. Measure approved. May I have a motion to memorialize resolution for faith therapy consulting LLC doing business as FTC Kids?
So moved.
Second.
Valerie?
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Karaj?
Yes.
Mr. Luke Damiano?
Yes.
Ms. Cataldo?
Yes.
Mr. Postus?
Yes.
Mayor Damiano?
Yes.
Mr. Kilpatrick?
Chairman votes yes. Resolution is approved. May I have a motion to memorialize resolution for Ascend New Jersey LLC slash Mr. Jones LLC?
So moved.
Seconded.
Valerie?
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Karaj?
Yes.
Mr. Luke Damiano?
Yes.
Ms. Cataldo?
Yes.
Mr. Postus?
Yes.
Mr. Kilpatrick?
Chairman votes yes. Resolution is approved. First up tonight is Mr. and Mrs. Such. Did I pronounce your name? Did I pronounce your name correctly? Can you clarify? Well, you clarify.
Sir, let me swear you. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give before this board is going to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Just tell us your name and spell your last name for the record.
Arkadiusz Such, S-U-C-H.
Oh, I am sorry. You can begin. Tell us what you're doing, what you're about. Did you bring any professionals with you, an architect or?
No, I'm alone, trying to do by myself, so.
Just just explain simply what you're doing.
I'm trying to expand my house and one wall expand and add the garage connected to the house and raise the second floor to eight foot ceiling and connect the overground pool to the house.
Okay, I think I'll call on our engineer. Can you ask the questions about variances and your comments?
Yes, as far as the variance goes, there's a front yard setback requirement of 20 feet. And it's with the proposed dwelling, which is the same as the existing dwelling, it's 16.1 feet, so it's an existing division. The other bulk variance necessaries for the accessory to structure setback for the swimming pool from a principal building, 15 feet is required and zero feet is proposed.
What causes that? Is it the deck right up against the?
Essentially.
And it's an above ground.
Correct.
So you use that for going into and getting out of?
Yes, I wanna have like deck going out from the house, straight from the back going to the swimming pool and go back instead of walking through the grass to the pool.
Okay, continuing.
Uh, other than that, it's a straightforward application. I have a couple of minutes. Have you seen my review?
Yes.
Letter. Are you in agreement with addressing all the?
Yes, I agree on everything.
Okay. Other than that, if applicants want a little more description of the project, I have nothing further.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Are you aware that you're expected to comply with all the directions requests of the engineer?
Yes.
All right. Does anyone, any member of the board have any questions?
Chairman, I do. The this according to the drawing A1, it looks to me like the pool is five feet from the the wall of the back of the house. And it will be all connected by a deck. And yet the application says there's zero distance between the house and the pool. Is that, is that zero because there's a deck involved? Or?
Yes, the deck is a covered deck, I believe, because of the wall.
So that's considered part of the house?
Yeah, right.
Okay. Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Any other questions from board members? You have any questions? All right, may I have a motion to open up the meeting to the public? Second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Any member of the public wishing to come up and address this applicant, ask questions, make statements, please come up now? No members of the public coming forward, I close the meetings to the public. Any other discussion from the board?
There, there, I do have a question. On the site, there are a couple of utility poles that are at the rear of the property. If you're looking at your garage to the left and at the back of your property, is that supporting any power or is what what is the purpose there of that pole?
I don't know. I bought the house like in this February, I believe, I had closing and the electric is coming from the other side of the street. The gas is also going through the street, so nothing is going from the back of my house to as a utility to my house. So maybe this is old ones still on the property. I'm not sure.
You have a question? You have to tell me what it is. Are you a member of the public? Because you kind of missed that. All right, go ahead. What's your question? I step up to the mic.
You know what? I just found out we're gonna.
We have to swear you.
Pardon? Raise your right hand. You swear in front of the testimony you're about to give before this board is going to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth. Tell us your names, spell your last name and give us your.
All right, Sherry Cichy, C-I-C-H-Y.
And your first name?
Sherry. So, um, I actually just got out of the hospital. I had a brain bleed, so if I don't make sense, just question me, you know, try to clarify what I'm trying to say. But I just found out we're gonna be expanding the town with more housing.
I'm sorry, you you're only able to ask questions of this applicant for this application. Okay, you can come up later.
He's not, it's not to do with that, that unit that is going on.
We we understand.
Right. No.
This is not the application.
It's a separate application.
There being no further questions, may I have a motion?
Chairman, I'll make the motion that we approve the application for variance for a front yard setback where 20 feet is required, but 16.1 feet is proposed because that's existing. That's your current house distance from the street. Also, approval of the pool setback where 15 feet is required and zero feet is proposed.
May I have a second?
Second.
Valerie, please pull the board.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Karaj?
Yes.
Mr. Luke Damiano?
Yeah.
Ms. Cataldo?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Postus?
Yes.
Mr. Kilpatrick?
Chairman votes yes. The application is approved. Enjoy.
Thank you. Did you call nine names?
We need nine.
Yes.
All right, I mean.
You pulled the mayor and councilman.
Mr. Damiano? Mayor Damiano?
Yes.
Councilman Scobah?
Yes.
Thank you. Next application is JSL. Thank you. Next application is JSL.
Chairman, I don't, through the counselor, I, the mayor and myself cannot sit on this application, so I want to thank the board members. Thank you. Good night.
You are refused. Thank you.
Okay, John Vettery entering my appearance on behalf of JSL Properties, Three University Plaza, Suite 207, Hackensack, New Jersey. It will be very brief tonight in that applicant is seeking an adjournment to the next meeting. We've had an opportunity to review the planner's letter and the engineer's letter, want to go back, talk with our professionals, perhaps make some changes and come back without the need for further notice at the next meeting, which I understand is August 1st.
August is correct. We don't have to take any action on this to be carried.
The board should acknowledge the request to carry. And if the board wants it carried without any further notice, we can make that announcement to the public.
Can we consider that so noticed? The applicant will return at the August meeting. The July meeting is 4th of July, so we will not be here. And the motion will be carried to that point. The meeting will not be noticed, but you will obviously know from the agenda, agenda, the posting, and if you follow social media, you'll definitely be there. I would like, I want to take one moment though. Because the applicant has mentioned he reviewed the reports from our professionals, our engineer and our planner. And I don't believe the public gets to see those reports. Right? Public doesn't get to see the planner or the engineer reports.
Well, they're public records, you make them.
Prior to the meeting? Okay, I was not aware of that.
They have, they have the right to come down to the municipal building. I don't know if those reports are online.
No.
They are. If they're not, then if they want to see the reports, they have every right.
Okay. I would just like to call attention to the number one variance on this application was the use variance. And I just want to read from our planner's report, "The intent of the TV CBD that's transit bill in Central Business District is to create a pedestrian-friendly and active downtown. Presence of residential units on the ground floor is categorically not permitted as it defeats the purpose of the intent of the Central Business District." The CBD, TV CBD zone of our zones in town has the most input of what is required for Falcon area variances of any of the zones. The board would like to see the number of variances requested held to a minimum. All right, so I just, I just note that there are eight variances. We would like to see that minimum.
And understood, and that's part of the process that we'll go back with the professionals, our engineer, our planner, our traffic consultant, take a look at that and then resubmit, you know, well within the timeframe prior to the next meeting.
Very well. Thank you very much.
For members of the public, so if you've heard, the matter is being carried to August 1st. There'll be no further notice required by either publication in the newspaper or if you've received the certified letter because you've lived with, because you live within 200 feet of the property, you will not, that will not happen again. We're carrying this without further notice, so if you're interested in what's going to happen with that application, you should return to this location on August 1st at 7 o'clock.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So it won't be heard tonight. We're going to do some board business. You're free to go. Nobody will find you or anything. And we thank you for coming. We thank you for your interest. Is there any old business before the board? Any new business? Do you have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, everyone.